Welcome everyone to the Millbury Planning Commission meeting for February 3rd, 2025. Can we do a roll call of the commissioners, please?
Commissioner Quake?
Commissioner Choi?
Present.
Vice Chair Davis?
Here.
Chair Chan?
Here.
Thank you for planning commissioners are present. Commissioner Wong is excused.
Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. The next item on the agenda is the land acknowledgement. The Millbury Planning Commission acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral, traditional, and contemporary home homeland of the Rama Tush Aloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. Next up is the agenda review. Looks like we have one public hearing item. Any comments from staff or the commission on the agenda? Okay, great. All right, moving on then to item two, approval of meeting minutes. We have one set of minutes from the meeting on December 2nd. Any comments or revisions from the commissioners?
I'll second.
All right, great. Any objections to approving the meeting minutes of December 2nd? All right, great. The minutes are approved. Next item is the public communication. So this is reserved for any people who wish to comment on items that are not appearing on tonight's agenda, but are nonetheless the, under the purview of the planning commission. Each speaker has three minutes. Any speaker slips or hands raised to comment?
No speaker slips or hands raised.
Okay, great. Moving on to the public hearing, item 4A. This is a hearing on a design review permit and exception request to allow a significant renovation and construction of a new 997 square foot second story and 224 square foot first story on 407 Cypress Avenue. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, good evening, Chair Chan and planning commissioners. I'm Nestor Guevara, senior planner, and I'll be making the presentation for the 407 Cypress Avenue project. As mentioned, this is an application for a design review permit and an exception request at 407 Cypress Avenue. This map here just shows the location of the project. It's in the Cappuccino neighborhood, and the red dot shows the location of the project site. As way of background, this lot is found in the R1 zone, which is the single-family residential zone. It's a 5100 square foot interior lot that contains a single-story home that's just over 1,200 square feet. And the proposal is for a first-story addition as well as the construction of a new second story. This here just shows the existing site plan for the single-story residence. And then this is the proposed site plan for the two-story residence. It meets all setbacks both for the first and the second story, as well as the front yard landscaping requirements and the rear open space requirements. And it also includes a deck that's attached to the rear, which is on the single story, on the first story. Moving on into the floor plans, this is the proposed first floor plan. It includes a living room, dining room, kitchen, a family room, two bathrooms, and as mentioned, the attached deck in the rear. And it also includes a one-car garage that's attached. This is the proposed second floor plan. It includes three bedrooms and two bathrooms, a walk-in closet, and a laundry room as well. As mentioned, all second story setbacks are met. This, we're moving on into the elevations, the proposed elevations now. This is the proposed front elevation, which features a mix of materials such as stucco siding, asphalt shingle for the roofing, and the use of wood as well. I should mention that the project also meets the maximum height requirement for the R1 zone. And here we see the proposed rear elevation that shows the proposed deck and the rear as well. This is the proposed left side elevation. And finally, the proposed right side elevation. And this slide here shows a 3D rendering of what the project would look like. It just gives a better representation of all the materials and colors that are being proposed. As mentioned, the first story includes or has stucco. The second story has siding, horizontal siding. And then there's the use of wood for the entry and aluminum for both the garage door and the windows. The front door has, uses wood as well. In terms of neighbor response, a total of seven adjacent owner consultation forms were sent out in the neighborhood. Three of these forms were returned in support of the project. Two were returned in opposition to the project, and two were unreturned. And this map here shows the project location in blue and the adjacent owners in red. As you'll see, the adjacent owners at 403 Cypress, just to the right of the project site, and the one in the rear at 319 Santa Lucia, were the ones that returned opposition adjacent owner forms. As mentioned, 403 Cypress returned a adjacent owner form in opposition to the project. The neighbor noted concerns regarding privacy due to a proposed garage side door, as well as concerns regarding a proposed second story setback, or second story deck, sorry. And the image here on the right, the circle in the red there, just shows the proposed garage door on the side of the project site. In analyzing the concerns for the neighborhood 403 Cypress, staff notes that the proposed garage door is set back nine feet and eight inches from that shared side property line. With the concerned neighbor, the minimum requirement here is five feet. The applicant also notes that they will be planting landscaping in that shared side property line, which would increase privacy as well. And staff notes that the applicant removed a previously proposed second story deck, which the adjacent owner form mentions, but that is not a part of the project anymore. In addressing the neighbor concerns, the applicant revised the project to only include a first story deck. As mentioned, the adjacent owner rear neighbor at 319 Santa Lucia also submitted a form in opposition to the project. The neighbor mentioned concerns regarding shading and loss of light, as well as, again, privacy concerns due to a proposed second story deck. And as just noted, the second story deck is not a part of the project anymore. In terms of the shading and loss of light, the applicant, as part of their plan set sheets A15 and A15.1, included a solar access study. And this shows the shadow effects from the existing and the proposed residence. And this slide here shows the solar access study for December, the 4pm. For the existing on the left, and on the right, it's the proposed project shadow. Staff notes that, as you'll see in the existing shadow study for December 4pm, there already is neighbor, or there already is a shadow created by the existing residents. And staff would like to make one more note regarding the adjacent owner form at 319 Santa Lucia is that the homeowner that submitted this adjacent owner form actually has since sold their property. And staff did meet with the new homeowners to go over the project and discuss it, and they did not provide any opposition to the project as presented. As mentioned, the applicant is also requesting an exception. The Millbury Municipal Code, single-family residences in the R1 zone are required to provide two parking garage spaces. Single-family residences, or the code also states that single-family residences built with one-car garages that were constructed prior to the adoption of the two-space requirement can receive special consideration. This proposed residence does have a one-car garage, and it was built prior to the two-space requirement. The applicant is then requesting an exception to the two-space parking requirement. The project site has a lot width that's a little bit wider than usual in Millbury. The lot width is 60 feet. As mentioned earlier, the proposed home is set back from the left property line at nine feet and eight inches from that side, and from the other side, it is set back 10 feet and four inches. The minimum in both cases here would be five feet. The additional one-car space would need to be a minimum of 10 feet wide per Millbury Municipal Code. Expanding the garage then to two parking spaces would appear to still allow the proposed project to be built to meet all setbacks. Millbury Municipal Code also states that there's an allowance for dedicated surface parking to be provided when side-by-side parking spaces are not feasible. The applicant provided a letter exploring options to meet the parking requirement, which is included as attachment four of your packet. In this letter, the applicant explored two options. One, to provide two side-by-side spaces, and another to provide parking, two spaces in a tandem configuration. Expanding the garage to meet the two-car requirement would increase the construction cost per the applicant's letter due to factors such as relocating the kitchen and the bathroom, along with the plumbing and gas lines that would need to be relocated as well, as well as additional foundation and excavation work and backfilling work. As part of the analysis for the exception request, staff also performed an analysis of parking garages in the neighborhood. As you see in the map on the screen here, staff found that a majority of the homes within 200 feet of the project site do have one-car garages. The blue dots on this map show the homes that have two-car garages. So out of 28 homes studied, 16 in the neighborhood have one-car garage homes, and the remaining 12 have two-car garages, or two-car garages. As mentioned earlier, this lot is a little bit wider than the usual 50 feet we find in the R1 zone in Millbury. Due to this width, there is additional space for surface parking, while the project can still meet all the other development standards such as the front yard landscaping. And this image here just highlights the space in the plan, the site plan that includes a space for surface parking in addition to the one-car garage. In order to grant this designer review permit, the planning commission must make the following findings. Number one, that the architectural landscaping and general appearance of the proposed building or structure and grounds are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Number two, that the project complies with all applicable development regulations. Number three, that the project will not cause a significant visual impact to neighboring views from principal rooms of residents. And number four, that the proposal is not detrimental to the orderly, harmonious, and safe development of the city, and will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood in which the building or structure is proposed to be erected. As detailed in attachment one to the staff report, staff finds that the planning commission can make these findings. Per Millbury Municipal Code, in order to grant an exception, the following findings must also be made. And these are that, number one, the deviation granted from the minimum required or maximum allowable development standard prescribed for the zoning district in which the project site is located will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to property and improvements existing upon any abutting parcel. And number two, that the deviation granted from the minimum required or maximum allowable development standards prescribed for the zoning district in which the project site is located will, under the circumstances of the particular case, be compatible with the property and improvements existing or proposed upon the project site. Staff finds that these findings can be made as detailed in attachment one to the staff report. And with that said, staff is recommending that the planning commission review the project, consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and adopt the attached resolution approving the designer review permit and exception requests applications to allow a significant renovation and the construction of a new 997 square foot second story and a 224 square foot first story addition to an existing 1,234 square foot single-story residence, resulting in a total proposed floor area of 2,455 square feet with an existing non-conforming attached garage in the single-family residential zoning district. Staff would also like to note that, just a small correction in the staff report. On page nine of the staff report, I believe it's the neighborhood character section, it mentions that this project is in the Meadows neighborhood. It's in the Cappuccino neighborhood, of course. And I believe it also states that there are views of the bay in this neighborhood or in the street, which there aren't. But that concludes staff's presentation. We are available for any questions, and the project applicant is here to present as well.
Thank you, staff. Any questions from the commission? All right, thank you. Would the project applicant like to come forward and speak on the project? Okay, thanks. Please come to the mic so you can...
Hi, thanks for hearing our case. I'm Mark McGurelli, the architect. So we put a lot of time into this, so I hope the drawings speak for themselves. And, you know, if you have any questions, you can answer those.
Any questions from the commissioners? I don't think, yeah, okay, thank you. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Quake.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry? I hope so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Should we now open a public comment? Okay, are there any members of the audience who wish to speak on this project? Or are there any hands raised on Zoom?
There was one, Jeremy, can you hear us? Would you like to unmute yourself?
Hello, can you hear us?
Yes.
Awesome, sorry.
Can you please say your name and your address that you're calling from?
Yes, we are Crystal and Jeremy, and we are the new homeowners of 319 Santa Lucia. So our backyard, we share a fence with the backyard of 407 Cypress. We have met with Nestor to go over the plans, and we are not in opposition of it. I think it will be a great addition to the neighborhood. And the actual designs do look really nice. I just ask that the continuation of care and detail to minimize our loss of natural light in our backyard continue to be considered. We have, unfortunately, we only have one window, two windows that are south-facing that really maximize the use of natural light. And I think originally, our concerns were with the erection of the second story, that it would block that, but looking at the architectural plans, I don't think that is the case. Nestor had mentioned to us that there may be some trees grown for privacy, for added privacy. So I just wanted to make sure that those were also not going to be blocking any of the natural light that would come through to our windows that are south-facing.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other commentators wish to speak on the project?
There are no other slips or comments on Zoom.
Is there a motion to close the public comment, then?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, any objections to closing public comment? All right, great. Turning back to, oh, sorry, yes. Okay, sure.
Thank you, motion passes for zero, public comment is now closed.
All right, back to the commission. Any discussion, further discussion?
Chair Chan, if I may, the public commenter mentioned trees in the rear.
Oh, right, yes.
I believe they are proposing two cherry laurel trees in the rear property line. And I believe the maximum height is about 20 feet per the landscape plan.
And then, based on the relative height of the tree versus the house, like, what do you, what do you think in terms of the natural light concerns that were expressed?
It's tough to say because the shadow study, solar access study doesn't include the trees. But maybe the project architect can speak to it a little bit more.
Sure.
Hey, good evening. My name is Venus. I'm also the homeowner of this project. I'm also the architec of this project. So speak to the two trees in the back, which is about 20 feet in height, and the house itself, it reaches about 29 feet. So considering the angle of the solar daily, it does not block the shadow. It does not block any of the shadow coming out from the sun. And simultaneously, it provides privacy as well to the windows that are looking from our house. And it adds additional screening to their backyard as well. So that's why we are putting the two trees right there. That's the main purpose. But if the new homeowner consider about the trees blocking the sunlight, we are happy to remove those as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any other comments from the commission? Sure, Commissioner Choi.
So I just want to say, I like the material palette. I think it's very appropriate for the neighborhood. It's a fine design. It's very respectful of the, you're meeting all the setbacks requirements. I appreciate you addressing the privacy concerns of your neighbors by the strategies you've implemented, including planting the trees, obscuring the windows strategically, and of course, eliminating the second story balcony as well. Thank you, staff, for report on the one-car garage exception. That was very thorough, and it helped just explain the reasoning to support the exception. Thank you.
Any other commissioners want to?
I'll just say, I go with what he pretty much said. It's a lovely design, it'd be a nice update to the neighborhood, and I have no opposition to the exception for the one-car garage.
I agree with the other commissioners about the one-car parking, and I believe that location is like within that half mile from transit, which in today's environment wouldn't even need any parking if they wanted to, so it fits in the neighborhood.
Are we ready to, is there a motion forthcoming?
Through the chair.
Oh, yes.
Just one note of the commenter and the trees. So the structure is proposed to be 29 feet and nine inches. The trees at maturity are approximately 20 feet, so it should be lower than the height that exists of that proposed home. But you know, we could work with the applicants and the neighbor if a different species and with a different height is much more desirable. The trees were planted and shown in the plans in response to privacy concerns by the previous owner. We think that it does help with that, any privacy impacts. So it is something that we could work with applicant and the neighbor after this meeting, if that's efficient for the commission.
May I? If we can have some trees, even if they're shorter, more trees is always better, just for all of the other reasons that trees are good, not just privacy.
Any other discussion? Oh, yes, Vice Chair, sorry.
I also emphasize the need of trees. And if there is a specific tree that might fit better, it's up to the two parties, however, I would like to see trees there.
Any other discussion?
Motion?
Yes.
All right, I move to approve a design review permit and an exception request application to allow a significant renovation and the construction of a new 997 square foot second story and a 224 square foot first story addition to an existing 1,234 square foot single-story residence, resulting in the total proposed floor area of 2,455 square feet with an existing non-conforming attached garage in the single-family residential R1 zoning district at 407 Cypress Avenue.
Second, second that.
It's been moved and seconded. I did want to note that, do you see that the member of the public is raising their Zoom hand? We did close the public hearing, but it does sound like you can, the applicant is open to further discussion with you, so. All right, shall we do a vote? On the motion?
Commissioner Quake? Yes. Commissioner Choi?
Aye.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Chan?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes for zero.
All right, the action of the planning commission is considered final, pending a 10-day appeal period and payment of the required appeal fee. For anyone who wishes to appeal the decision of the planning commission, please contact the city clerk at 650-259-2414, or etran@ci.milbury.ca.us. All right, next on the agenda is new business, but there's no new business items. So moving on to staff updates.
Yes, Commissioner, thank you. Just a few updates tonight. One is the city's permit software. The city council approved a contract with cloud permit, and the city will be implementing a new permit tracking system to track permits and building permits.
implementing a new permit tracking system to track permits and building permits, coenforcement cases, planning approvals. It'll include payment intake as well, so online, it's got online submittals. And we're very excited. It'll roll out over the next year. So we're going to do some implementation and then roll it out to the public. So it'll be towards the end of the year where that'll be implemented and available for the public. So that's exciting.
Wait, sorry. Talking a little fast. Does it do both things? You can track the history of permits and does it also a way to apply for permits?
Correct.
Okay, it's both?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes, you can apply for a permit online.
Great.
And then...
So would the applicant be able to submit drawings, all the submittals using it online? Oh, that's awesome.
That's correct, yes. So we'll be able to take these designer view permit applications online completely 100%. They can pay online as well. And it'll be used for preparing the packets for these meetings as well. So it's going to be full, full service. So it'll be, you can apply for different permits. You get a water-hurry permit. You can apply for designer review permit. You can get even tree removals. Applications will be taken online. So the goal is to get everything.
And the public can search this database to see permits?
Yes, there is a public-facing component as well. And there's certain, obviously, certain functionalities that are available and some that aren't, but yes.
And the historic database, how far does it go back?
Well, we're going to be, I think, when we first roll it out, it's going to be that day forward. Going back, we'd have to go and do research. Maybe that's something we could do in another phase, but under this contract, it would just be moving forward.
Gotcha.
There isn't any ability to search this.
Our history is just hard copies. We are working on an effort to digitize all our hard copies so that all permits in the past will be digitized and available online. So if you wanted to see the permit history for a particular project, you'd be able to look that up.
That won't be in the next year.
I'm not sure of the timing of that. I'll go back to you on that. Okay, did you have any?
No.
Okay, so moving on, inclusionary housing and density bonus study. So the city, we took, the city hired a consultant to assist us with the inclusionary housing and density bonus study, took that to the city council. We presented it last week. And the direction that we got is to conduct outreach to our local property owners and get their input as to, you know, how we could better assist them and then their redevelopment of their property. So the city will be over in the next few weeks doing that and getting back to the city council afterwards. Just a reminder on what the study showed for the inclusionary housing study. The city in 2021, I believe, adopted an ordinance to acquire 15% inclusionary housing. So 15%, if you were to build any project, 10 units or more, have to provide 10%, I'm sorry, 15% for affordable housing. And the level of affordability depends on whether it's rental or ownership. And we had been requested by the council to look at increasing that to 20%. Consultant did a study, showed that 20% was not feasible. In the current economic conditions, 15% is also not feasible for developers. And that study showed that 8% would be feasible, would pencil out for developers. So we presented that finding in addition to a local density bonus ordinance that would incentivize developers to take advantage of state law and a local density bonus in order to receive more units. And so that's kind of the, they're kind of related, but those are incentives to encourage more development here in Milbury. So we'll be going back to the city council at a later point.
One other. I actually had a question about that. So there won't be, we won't formally discuss how the planning, what the planning commissions feedback on that program would be and pass that along to the city council.
Well, if it's, if the council recommends that we come back with a formal ordinance, then we'd have to go through you. It'll first, and then you'll provide a recommendation to the council.
Okay, thanks.
But since this was a direction from the council, yeah, wanted to get their input at city sessions.
Sounds good.
Okay. Additionally, another advanced planning project that we have been working on that you guys already know about is the objective design standards. And this step in the process is going to the city council for a study session, just like we did with the planning commission. So we have, we'll be going to the city council next week on the 11th, to the city council on the objective design standards, very similar to what we did with the planning commission. And with regards to upcoming meetings, the next meeting that's originally scheduled is on a holiday on the... So we'll be rescheduling that meeting to Wednesday that week and we will have one item for the commission, so we'll have a special meeting. And that concludes my updates this evening.
Yes, Commissioner Quigg.
Is there any updates on some of the projects that were in the pipeline and have just kind of gone by the wayside? Such as the El Rancho, has anything come up on that? I know they've run into some issues, but I just, an update and then the new all-affordable, I see nothing. I'm just wondering how that's moving along. And the other one is moving along. I can see that one.
Yeah, the El Rancho project is still in, under permit review. So right now, it, well, it's not being reviewed. It's incomplete. They have revisions and comments to address. So the ball's in the applicant's court. We're just waiting for them to resubmit with the revisions. So just with interest rates the way they are and construction costs being very high, not a lot of developers are moving quickly. So I don't think they're in any rush to resubmit. But they are still kind of in the queue.
So I thought we had approved that project.
We didn't.
The thing. So what's incomplete about?
Their building permit application still has comments.
Okay, okay. And what about the all-affordable?
That one, that one is, yeah.
The project at 1301 Broadway is, that one's under permit review as well. I believe they just submitted their second revisions, so we'll be reviewing that soon.
And with regards to, since we're on projects Alexandria, the corn shell permit has been, has been signed off by planning. We did a final inspection. And then I'm going out to the site, it's this Wednesday, actually, two days to do a final inspection on the amenity building. And then they're looking to have Icon move in sometime in, what I heard was March, so next month. So very quickly, so they'll be wrapping it up very quickly here and Icon will be doing the tenant improvements, so exciting.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, moving on to planning commissioner announcements, any announcements from commissioners? Commissioner Quigg?
I have an announcement. I know, I heard that it was announced at the city council meeting, but I don't know if any of you remember John Walker, a long time. Planning Commissioner passed away very recently. And so I just wanted to share the sad news. He was just a really great guy. And he left, he just moved out of town to be with his family five years ago. So you remember him, don't you? You don't either, okay.
Yeah, he was on the commission when I started.
Okay. Well, he was on for a lot of years, so.
Any other announcements? All right, well, with that, we've reached the end of our agenda. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night. See you in a couple of weeks.